Including tribal governments to address the equitable distribution or redistribution of resources and power and recognizing reconciling and rectifying historical and contemporary injustices.
Thank you, Malina. We love reading this in advance of our meeting and hope that this definition stays present for each of us and can help inform our conversations today. Today, as I mentioned, will be a bit of a different format than we have for normal Oregon Health Policy Board meetings. So the first half of our, half an hour of our agenda will be focused on our Health Equity Committee's membership or committee membership and a decision for today. And the remainder of the meeting, part two, will be our hosting of the Oregon's Annual Healthcare Cost Growth Target Program and public hearing. So to review, just to kick us off right at the beginning, I believe we want to welcome Alex. They've come to join us today to help present the Health Equity Committee proposed memberships slate. So Alex, without further ado, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Brenda. And let me just check in to see how my sound is for folks who are in the room and online. Can you all hear me okay?
We can. Thank you, Alex.
Perfect. I love the hybrid format. The Health Equity Committee has a hybrid meeting coming up very soon. It's great to see folks together in person and also making this type of meeting accessible for people across the state. So thank you so much. I also just want to check in about the slides before I get started. Would you all like me to share my screen or did you have a slide deck that you're using?
We have the slide deck.
Great. Okay. Well, I also have the slides available if that, if that's better for you all for me to share it. And just while y'all are pulling out the slide deck, I'll just do a brief introduction, visual description. My name's Alex Friedman. I use they/them pronouns. And I'm a white person with olive colored skin, with Jewish descent, also queer, non-binary, assigned male birth person. On today, I have my hair pulled back behind my headphones and I'm wearing a gray shirt and scarf. And I have a blurred background. Great. I'm also here on behalf, oh, yeah, I see, I can go ahead and share my slides. I'm gonna go ahead and do that. Make sure I get that right. Okay. And y'all can see this presentation, okay?
Again, thank you.
Not perfect. Great. So I'm here on behalf of the Health Equity Committee to present to you our Spring 2024 member slate. It's my pleasure to get to present this to you today. I'm gonna just do a quick overview of our recruitment process, a little bit of information about who we recruited and the makeup of the committee with these new additions. And then we'll have a little bit of time, time for discussion before the vote. I do want to respect y'all's time, the amazing work you have coming up today. So I'm gonna have, keep this as brief as possible and also welcome any questions that you all have about this slate or about recruitment in general. I know there's some, some big important conversations about recruitment happening among the subcommittees in with the Oregon Health Policy Board. I'm happy to take those questions back to the Health Equity Committee as well. So just to get us started, our orientation to the Health Equity Committee itself, we have two co-chairs, Brian Lambert and Katie Cox, who unfortunately neither of them were able to make it today. So you stuck with me. Our liaisons to the Oregon Health Policy Board or from the Oregon Health Policy Board to the Health Equity Committee, or heck, Carly Hood-Mrannick, I know is not here today, and Dr. Rose Hemmings. Hi, Dr. Hemmings. And then there's two staff from the Oregon Health Authority in the Equity and Inclusion Division that support Health Equity Committee. And that's Maria Elena Castro, who also is not here today on vacation, and myself. Okay. So let's go straight into the recruitment process. And this is a similar process. We usually do one year at the end of the year. But we did another one because we had a few vacant slots and a few departing members at the beginning of the year. We were recruiting for five positions total out of 15. We also have one slot of, that specifically reserved a seat specifically for a tribal liaison. That's not part of our process. We use an intersectional gaps analysis tool to identify priority representation areas so that we can have as much representation of key areas as possible on our committee. We don't have, we're not defined in statute in terms of what representation is on which seat. So we decided that ourselves, we use this tool to do that with an equity lens. And then the recruitment window itself took place in April. We solicited applications through a lot of different channels, many of the typical ones, including the Oregon Health Policy Boards and different subcommittees, networks. But we also really wanted to focus on community-based partnerships and networks, including using Oregon Health Authority's Community Partnership Outreach Program that works directly with many different community-based organizations, as well as regional health equity coalitions, also works really directly with providers and equity-focused, community-based organizations throughout the state. And then also CCO and provider networks to really try and bring in a vast array of different types of perspectives to the table, which is what we, that we need to do equity work well. Also, we use an intersectional scoring rubric, which incorporates lived experience and identity alignment with our priority representation areas, which are again identified in that intersectional gaps analysis. And then for the scoring, we have our Health Equity Committee members participate in that process as well as Equity and Inclusion staff. Okay. Just so that you all know, the priorities of representation areas that we're focused on, based on that intersectional gaps analysis, communities of color, immigrant refugee communities, people from the people with disabilities community, Two-Spirit and LGBTQIA+ identified individuals. People who have experience as an Oregon Health Plan member, people who have experienced working directly with Oregon Health Plan members and people who are active Oregon Health Plan members are a big focus for us right now. People who are age below 35 but over 60, people in rural Oregon. All right. Now some highlights of our recruitment. I'm gonna just do a quick description of the graphic that I have here on the right-hand side of the slide. Because it was always kind of draw attention. And then I'll go through the text that's on the left. Apologize to people who are using screen readers. This may not be the most accessible slide, but I'll do my best to describe the graphic that we're looking at. This graphic on the right has a breakdown of the percentage of Health Equity Committee members that are in those priority representation areas. So along the bottom, you have those different areas and that there's two columns for each of those different areas. One is a little bit of sound from the room, but it's okay. Blue bar is the percentage of the new members, which there's four new members that we're proposing today. The percentage that are in that aligned with that identity representation area. And then the orange bar is the percent of the full committee that, which is 14 members tribal representative right now. So you can see that for each of those different bars. Okay, now looking at the text, which will draw our attention to a few of these. We did increase depth of representation of those different priority identities. But you can see the percentages don't add up to 100 because many of our different members have sexual identities with many, that fulfill many different categories. Multiple or many. We have different areas of lived and professional expertise, like people who work in the substance use disorder treatment field, people that work at large health systems, and people that are working directly with or and also from immigrant refugee communities. Also, experience with Oregon Health Plan and Oregon Health Plan members themselves, big focus for us. You can see that we have two current Oregon Health Plan members already on our committee. That one's kind of in the middle. You can see it has orange bar, no blue bar, because we didn't add any Oregon Health Plan members. We're really hoping to. That's why we actually reserved one spot for additional Oregon Health Plan members in the future. Our next recruitment. Just gonna go to the next slide here. Our next recruitment window is in the fall of 2024. So again, we're saving one of our current vacant slots for, directly for an Oregon Health Plan member. Another one to add to the two that we already have on the committee. Also, I'm happy to say that we have representation now from all regional areas of Oregon. It's because we added Central and Eastern Oregon to our committee list. So you can see rural Oregon is all the way on the right. In this slide, you see 50% of our members were from rural, or our new members from rural Oregon, which brings our total for almost a 30%. Okay. And with that, this is the new member slate. I'll just quickly read the names because Juan Pablo Villalobos Garcia joining us, Beryl Amolo, Jeben Call, and Andy Walsh, the four people that we are proposing today. So I'll pause there. Thank you all so much for listening. I'm sure you have questions. I'm gonna leave this new members slate up just for a moment while people have a moment to read. That's the end of my slides. The rest is just question, answers, and vote voting for you all. You ready?
Great. Thank you so much, Alex. To the board members, questions for Alex? Health Equity Committee. I'm looking around the room, Malina. Bill, questions for Alex? Either of you? Hearing none. Alex, I want to thank you for the, and the committee members for the thorough nature of this recruitment. I know that you take it quite seriously and it shows. We were having a brief conversation, you know, as board leadership recently about the, the way our work in diversifying our committee representation has really taken a lot of progress over the last several years. And you're leading the way when we think about membership for Oregon Health Plan members on the committee itself. So I wanted to do a special shout out for that body of work as well. With that, if there are no questions or comments for Alex, I'll entertain a motion to accept the new members slate as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I can.
Great. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. Any abstentions? No abstentions. Okay, thank you, Alex. It looks like the motion carries. Congratulations. Yeah, thank you, Alex. And welcome to all the new members as well. Great. So with that, I did want to take a quick moment and talk a little bit about our committee representation and our membership. Just overall, we've been having a bit of a conversation with board leadership about continuing down the path of, of like taking a close look at committee diversity. And we may think about setting, I guess, standards for staff of OHA about what really great committee membership looks like. And so we're gonna endeavor into a process, I think, of getting a baseline understanding of our committee demographics by using real D and SOCI data, assessing lived and cross-cultural experiences of committee representation, get a good understanding of where we stand, you know, with our baseline as it is now. And with that, do much like what I think Alex demonstrated, which was this intersectional gap analysis around where we think, you know, the committees themselves are landing. So that as a board can have a conversation about what great committee representation actually looks like, kind of set a bar, and therefore the staff in the recruitment, the committee leadership over time can reference this document in essence to then go and speak additional candidates to help round out our committee composition. So wanted to say that, being feedback, I think Dr. Hemmings, Tony, Malina, Bill, anything in that process that you think would be really helpful as we set guidance for staff and for our board leadership as well?
I know, Dr. Hemmings, we've talked about, you know, how important it is to have a different kind of view around our committee membership. Did you want to say a few words about what you're hoping to achieve with that?
Um, yeah, you know, so as I looked at, did I need to say my name?
You can. Sure, 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 sure.
That's what I'm used to.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, so, you know, as I looked at the slate, the HEC, you know, I think that certainly we're doing a great job in making sure that there is a, there's diversity, whether you're talking about race, ethnicity, rural community, possibly lived experience, it's kind of hard to gauge. But I think where, where, you know, where the work needs to be is, you know, I, I feel that the, the membership is really made up of people who I feel are already in positions of power, right, have access. And maybe part of that is how the information gets out when there is a vacancy on these committees, right? It's all people who are already in the know or have access already are the ones who are receiving information. They're sharing it with other people who also have similar accesses themselves, and therefore that's what you get. However, you know, like I noticed, a lot of these people are in positions of leadership, right? And I'm concerned about that because I'm concerned, because I don't, we don't get to see all the applicants, right? So it's not clear to me how we end up with a slate that is primarily very heavy from organizations that's well-known, well-established, and also people who are already in positions of leadership. I know personally that there are others who have applied. What are some of the things that we're doing when we're going through the screening process that actually reads these people out? That's not clear to me, and I think that's something to look at. What is our screen out process, right, versus our screen in? We seem to have a really good understanding of our priorities, right, what we're looking for. But I think, focus it very heavily on that. I think we miss certain things and we miss out on bringing in people who are not necessarily in positions of power. So, you know, I do recognize, I did see there's a statement here that says the membership is to the individual and not the organization. But if we're being honest, organizations benefit, you know, from having individuals who are also in executive director positions. So, yeah, I, you know, it's something I think, you know, I would like to think through some more as to how we end up creating a different type of diversity, which I think we have not yet necessarily focused on. So.
So much. Thank you. Yeah.
I think off of sort of Dr. Hemmings' comments, which I think were sort of made me think of, not only do we want to look at the composition, at least in my opinion, but also how are our outreach and outreach efforts? Because we also want to look at, are we reaching these communities effectively? So I think being able to see, what does the applicant pool look like? If the applicant pool is still 95% white, urban, male, cisgendered, and heterosexual, then are we truly getting that message out?
Yeah.
So I think that, that's, it's really important to be able to look at, how is the message getting out? And how are people getting it out as well?
Thank you.
I agree.
Any other feedback, Kirsten? This is great sort of insight, I think, for us to take back to the conversation and planning. Any other questions or insight on this topic before?
I don't see, see this as exciting at the meeting, I think, when I first joined the board. And honestly, that looked like committee membership was something that didn't exist when I first joined this board. And this very deliberate like conversation around outreach and who's at the table started, it has definitely progressed and, and will continue. So I just, I'm, I'm excited and appreciate, appreciate the push.
Thank you.
I would just add, yeah, I appreciate the attention to this necessary. And I think some of the other elements, I think, is where people have space or capacity to do this work and thinking about those financial restrictions and their ability to commit to time out of work. And thinking of the elements that are necessary to empower them to be in space to do that. It takes time and so foregoing a wage during the day. And so other elements, I just really appreciate a look at this. And again, I think that we're just being deliberate about it and attentive. So I really appreciate Dr. Hemmings like calling this out and being thoughtful to this. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I think we've got time for one other board action item before we open to sort of our second part of today's meeting agenda in our public hearing. That is to approve our May Oregon Health Policy Board meeting notes. So they're in your packet, they're available in our materials. If you have any questions, I'd entertain them now. If not, is there someone who'd like to move approval for the main minute?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Tony. Is there a second? Awesome. Thanks, Kirsten. Any questions, feedback, edits? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by aye. Bill and Malina, thank you. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much. So Tara, Sarah, are we ready to begin the second part of today's meeting?
Yes, yes, we are. I think there's one member that Felisa, I'm sorry, not her.
Great. Thank you. So as we're preparing for this exciting opportunity for our public hearing, I'd like to just say a few words to kick us off. First, to welcome everyone who's participating, both online and in the room today for this opportunity. This is the third year. Hi, Felisa, welcome. Come on in, have a seat. This is our, for our third year, the Oregon's Cost Growth Target Program has held a public hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to shine a light on our healthcare cost growth trends to help us with our shared understanding of the factors that are impacting costs and spending and discussions and strategies or recommendations to help address those cost drivers. Last week, the Oregon Health Authority and the Cost Growth Target Program released the 2024 Cost Growth Trends Report, which is an exciting read. And that data will round a lot of our conversation today. So as we welcome new people to the room and online, again, just really grateful for the opportunity to be with you all for this important topic. For those of you who may not be tracking, this is a really strong priority for the Oregon Health Policy Board. Affordability is one of our key strategic areas of focus for this year and for quite some time, actually. So it's great to have the opportunity to dedicate this entire meeting for this purpose and to be more directly involved in the work and helping shape how we as a state and as health, the healthcare community overall are working to make sure that people in Oregon can afford healthcare. Welcome. We have several board members and panelists who are, are joining us today. Board members will be helping facilitate part of today's panels and have space for all board members to engage in discussion and reflection at the end of each panel. To give you a general overview of the way the agenda will work today, we'll have some opening remarks from Senator Patterson, Representative Knows, Dr. Sage Alhathy, and Felisa Haggins, who's our Cost Growth Target Advisory Committee Chair, former Oregon Health Health Support Member, too. We'll have panel discussions on the cost growth in the commercial market, and then we'll take a break, followed by a panel discussion on strategies to control cost care, healthcare cost growth. It's quite a mouthful. And then some time for public comment. We'll have quite a bit of time, we anticipate, at the end of today's agenda for public comment. And if not filled by people who have submitted public comment either online or in writing, we'll open up that time for further conversation with the board. So to start us off, I'd like to thank all of our speakers who volunteered to be part of today's conversation. It's a really big deal to be in this kind of a forum, to join such a critical, such a critical topic for our state and to share their perspectives and to participate actively in this conversation. So thank you. And thank you to the staff who worked really hard to coordinate the time, the materials, support today's public hearing, and to our community members and partners and those attending the meeting online to make time available for this important topic. So as we welcome and introduce each of the speakers today, we'll start off first by welcoming Senator Deb Patterson, who I believe has joined us online, and to say a few opening remarks, and then we'll move to Representative Rob Knows. So Senator Patterson, are you with us?
Yes, good morning. Thank you. Oops, I'm sorry. You're looking at the light on my ceiling. Good morning. It's so good to be with you today and thank you for your, your critical work on this very urgent issue for Oregonians across the, across all of our state. You know, here in Salem, it's no different than other places. I recently met a constituent who was diagnosed with cancer. His medication costs $11,000 a month, and he does have patient assistance for the first six months. But he said, I don't know what I'm going to do after the, the six months of patient assistance. Am I going to simply die? Another woman I met with recently was living with her brother because her husband had passed away from cancer and their medical bills were such that she was forced to sell their home after his passing and had moved in with her brother and was having a difficult time finding housing because her credit was destroyed by the fact that she had had to incur so many medical debts on behalf of her husband. So we really need to do better for our citizens of Oregon. We have fine, incredibly fabulous healthcare here available in Oregon, and everyone should have access to quality care here. We know that between 2021 and 22, healthcare expenditures per person, per year in Oregon grew about 3.6%. That's around, bringing us up to about $9,261 per person, a total of $35 billion spent on healthcare in Oregon. And, but the cost is, that doesn't show the full cost for people because their patients' cost sharing has grown, like their copays and their deductibles. So the amount that people in Oregon with commercial and Medicare Advantage health plans, health plans are paying has increased by about 17% versus that 3.6% in recent years. There's, they're paying more of their share of their healthcare costs, even though they have health insurance. One survey found that about a third of Oregon adults have skipped needed dental care and had also delayed going to the doctor because of costs. One in four Oregon adults skip doses of medicine or did not fill a prescription due to its cost. And so we know that some of the main drivers for increased costs in Oregon have been pharmaceutical costs. As I mentioned, it related to the constituents here that I described their situations. And also hospital costs have grown rapidly. The most recent report from the Oregon Health Authority found that on a per person, per year basis, hospital outpatient costs also grew 3.7% statewide and retail pharmacy grew 1.4%, about fifteen and a half dollars per person. Of course, there are a lot of external factors impacting healthcare costs as we continue to see the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic on the health system across Oregon. As Senator, the Senate Healthcare Committee last week heard from Dr. Chris Whaley, who pointed out that we spend a lot because of healthcare prices. And prices are highly variable and they're not transparent. And the data shows that the price, whether something is very expensive or less expensive for the same service, is not necessarily linked to quality. So we have been working here, I went with my colleague, Representative Rob Knows over in the House, and my colleagues on the committee here in this chamber have been working over multiple legislative sessions to advance statewide policies to address cost drivers and improve healthcare affordability. I truly believe, as do my colleagues, that all Oregonians should have access to affordable, quality healthcare. So I, I'm looking forward to the report from Senate Bill's Prescription Drug Affordability Board on implementing upper payment limits on prescription drugs. That was one of their recommendations. I'm very interested in looking at price transparency. Our committee is, will be looking at this throughout the next interim, the rest of this. Our committee is, will be looking at this throughout the next interim, the rest of this interim in our informational sessions. And for example, in this last, just this last week, we heard informational presentations about facility fees and policy options to address them. So I really look forward, thank you for inviting me to be with you today. I really look forward to hearing from the panelists today and about what cost growth looks like on the ground for their organizations and for their efforts to improve affordability and access for all Oregonians. Thank you.
Opening remarks. I think next we have Representative Rob Noz, who will share a few thoughts.
Thanks, Senator, for kicking us off. So I don't know that I have much more to add other than the things that Senator Patterson showed. Like many of you, like the stories that Senator Patterson shared, I hear from people just about every day who have concerns about healthcare costs, whether they can, their medications are too expensive, they don't think their insurance is very good, as they have too much out-of-pocket expense that they have to cover, or maybe it's a small business and their rates just went through the roof, and now they have to find another health insurance plan because they can't afford the one that they've been using for so long. Senator already talked about, you know, how costs are going up and we're spending more on healthcare, and but maybe not always getting all the value that we want of it. And I think, you know, that's why this program and what we're talking about today, that's why you have like over 105 folks who've tuned in to watch this on Zoom to see what's going on, is so important and so vital. Folks not might remember, but we've been kind of at this approach now for almost a decade. I think I get to come here because in 2019, I sponsored the bill that kind of got this thing going with Senator Lee Byer, who's no longer serving in the legislature anymore. As, as an attempt to try to say, how can we get our arms around costs? And how can we get all the different actors in the healthcare system to try to do something better to keep costs down? I'm not going to go into all of the things that I think are going to be shared. I got a few little highlights, like looking at last year's report. We see that 19 of 30 payers met the cost growth target for at least one market, and 29 of 53 players met the target for at least one of the markets. Maybe it was because of some specific actions that they took, or maybe they had some strategies to restrain costs. Was it a random chance? Hopefully not. I think that's why we're looking forward to the presentation this morning and getting a chance to hear about some of the experiences from some of these entities in the report and see what we're doing. I think some of you have heard me opine a little bit that since the pandemic and since everything that we've experienced with healthcare costs coming out of the pandemic, I have been worried that maybe this approach is not going to work. And I'm hopeful that we're going to hear things today that remind me that evaluating how things are going, what's happening with costs, and what strategies we might try to bring the costs down is worthwhile, especially as we get ready to get into the next iteration of this program. So I look forward to the presentation. I can only stay till about 11:00 AM this morning, then I have something else I've got to jump off for. But I look forward to here, watching the slides and hearing what the panelists for share. And I look forward to having somebody put my mind at ease about this approach and that we've got something that we can try and keep doing to bring costs down.
Thank you, Representative Noz. Next, I'd love to welcome Dr. Sage Alhathy, constrained us live and in person here, to share a few of her thoughts in terms of opening comments for today's conversation. So Dr. Alhathy, when you're ready.
A little bit of feedback, just to say.
Okay, thank you. I thought Representative Noz had had feedback on my first slide.
No, 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 no. It's feedback comes now. Go ahead, Director.
So thank you, everyone, for having me. It's wonderful to see your faces. Again, I think the last time I saw all of us, or most of us here in person, was in my first couple of weeks on the job. So it's lovely to be back and for a topic that I and OHA care deeply about. So we're going to chat a little bit about the Cost Growth Target Program, and the intention, the objective, some steps ahead. I'm going to ask my colleagues to flip to the first slide. And as they do, I'll just remind everyone that the Cost Growth Target says that healthcare costs in Oregon should not grow more than 3.4% a year. It's not a cap, but a common goal. And the shared budget that all health plans and provider organizations must work towards to help keep healthcare spending in line with the economy. Next slide, please. So every year, as was evidenced by the beautiful report we put out about a week ago, OHA collects data, measures, and reports on cost growth in the state and factors that are driving cost growth. The 2024 report, as you can see on the screen, was released last week, and the key finding is that healthcare spending grew 3.6% statewide, just over our 3.4% target. There's more data on the slide that I won't read out at this time. But I will highlight next slide, please, that it's important to use data from that annual report to identify and then implement strategies, policies, and solutions that get at the key drivers of cost growth. And so I'm looking forward today to hearing about not just the challenges that all of us are facing. I think that there might be a mic on on your computer. Yeah, I don't know if you just make sure they're on mute. If they have, yeah, on your computer, just the sound and mic, so you can click with the speaker, even if you're not in the Zoom meeting. Oh, I turned my sound off, but maybe. Yeah, just everyone's listening to my running. Yeah, everyone in the room, because they were getting on the back when you started. Oh. So why don't you try again? My mic is off, but maybe my speaker's off. Okay, everybody can mute in. Okay, let's turn it off again. Okay. Let me know, can you still hear the feedback? Oh, rock the bricks. Okay, you know what? Maybe if I do this.
Yeah, it sounds like it might be a self, apparently it sounds like a white noise candy wrapper.
See, if I speak here, it's a great. Okay, well, you know what? I don't really need these notes. So let's try now without the laptop. Can you hear me fine? Unfortunately, it's still going. Ooh, that seemed to address it.
Well, I think they're just totally muted, right?
Oh, well, there you go.
I remember when we thought Zoom was amazing.
Is there still feedback and static?
No, that seems to have fixed it for me at least.
Hey, well, okay, do you want to try again, Dr. Alhathy?
Do you want me to log into the Teams meeting here, too?
I think we're good now.
Excellent.
This is fantastic.
Good. I'm going back on mute.
It's me.
That's a great song by Taylor Swift. In any case, all right, so we were talking just about the cycle from collecting data, analyzing it, and reporting on it that we do each year. And I was just affirming my hope and expectation. And I think all of our desire here to come to the table with real solutions and ideas for how we can get creative over the next few years to better serve all Oregonians. Next slide. So this conversation has been unfolding for a number of years. It started way back in 2017 with legislation subsequently enacted in 2019. Thank you, Representative Noz, in 2021. This is the third year that we've held a public hearing, the first of which was in 2022, and the second year that we've publicly reported on payer and provider performance. Next slide. And as was hopefully understood from, from the report, and I think my colleagues in the legislature underline this as well, not all cost growth is bad. And so there are events that transpire, acts of God, changes in taxes, COVID-19 pandemic that we understand have impacts on Costco drivers and that we do acknowledge and seek to accommodate in the analysis that we do. And then, of course, there are broader health policy priorities from advancing health equity to transforming our behavioral health system and investments in those priorities that necessarily at times will increase costs. And we want to, again, acknowledge and accommodate those two. I just want to conclude by saying that, as highlighted earlier, this is a priority for me. It's a priority for HPA. It's a priority for OHA. So much so that in the strategic plan that we just submitted to the governor's office on Friday, and which I look forward to sharing with you over the coming couple of weeks, one of our top five strategic goal areas was improving access to affordable care and ensuring that 100% of all people in Oregon can access affordable, quality care. And the work that the Cost Growth Target Program does, the work, again, that Sarah Bottomman's team does in HPA is foundational to that. So really grateful for the hard work of the team, excited to continue this conversation, and looking forward to the panels later today.
Thanks, Dr. Alhathy. Welcome to Felisa, who's our chair of the committee, if you'd like to say a few remarks.
Oh, great. Well, thank you all for having us here at the Oregon Health Policy Board. It's a fond place for me. I remember it well. And I would just like to actually start by thanking the staff at OHA, especially Sarah and Remy and all of the other staff who have worked tirelessly to put together this report. And I also want to highlight, as Senator Patterson pointed out, the many reports that OHA actually puts out on costs and quality. So, you know, pharmaceuticals was mentioned earlier, but there are many other reports and a lot of other work that lead up to sort of making up this cost growth. And without the sort of talented staff that we have at the Oregon Health Authority, none of that would happen. And so I just, I know it's a difficult time to be in public service for a lot of folks, but I just want to take a minute to appreciate all of their work and hanging in there with us for what has been a decade or longer process. And I'd like to thank the members of the Cost Growth Target Committee who have held sort of public meetings throughout the year to talk about these issues and discuss topics. I think that we're a committee that doesn't always agree, but I feel like we have a lot of robust conversation and really are all invested in how we move this date forward in containing costs. I think Senator Patterson and Representative Noz pointed out, what is the real tangible impacts of those numbers on the report? Right? What does it mean to a family when they have cancer and their question is, should I just die? Because they can't afford their healthcare costs. What does it mean to the individual patient who can't afford their prescription drug costs when they leave without their medicine? And what is the impact not only on their long-term health, but our overall community's health? And I think that that's why we are so invested in these programs. We're not invested in the 3.9, or 3.4, or 3.6. What we're invested in is the real-life people in our state that really matter. And so as we sort of move forward in these panels and the discussion today, I hope that we can keep those folks at the center of this discussion and continue to think about that. And I'm going to encourage, as we think about these panels, I want to just do a little, two quick reminders. As we set this public hearing before we've had a chance to sort of dig in on the numbers about the why for the outliers. So let's give people a little bit of grace, so we can talk to them first. So that's a reminder. I want to thank the panelists for coming here today, especially because I know it's hard to come here and talk in a panel with your competitors about your costs. Not everybody loves that activity, but we're going to do it every year. So let's just buckle in and get used to it, huh? And then I also just want to say that I think as the Cost Growth Target Committee, we're committed to moving forward on strategies. And I'm personally committed to moving forward on strategy, where we see that number meet the 3.4% target, but in all of our markets, by 90% of our payers at least. And so thinking about how strategies to move that forward in the future. So thank you. Thanks, Brenda.
Thanks, Felisa. Thanks. So to start with our first panelist, we'll invite our Oregon Health Policy Board member, Bill Kramer, who's online with us today to be the facilitator or moderator for our first panel. So Bill, go ahead.
Good. Thank you very much, Brenda. I'm Bill Kramer, member of the Oregon Health Policy Board, and I'm the liaison to the Cost Growth Target Program. First, I would like to thank our speakers who introduced the topic in such a compelling way. Senator Deb Patterson, Representative Rob Noz, OHA Director Sage Alhathy, and Felisa Higgins, co-chair of the Cost Growth Target Advisory Committee. In this segment, I'll start by presenting a high-level summary of the findings from the new Cost Growth Target Annual Report, and then turn to our panelists for their reactions and comments about past, current, and future cost trends. Before we dive into the report, I'd like to also express appreciation for the excellent work that the Oregon Health Authority's done in preparing this report, especially Sarah Bartman and Zachary Goldman. And I'm sure there's a great team there who work with them. And also many thanks to members of the Cost Growth Target Advisory Committee and those who have served on the Cost Growth Targets Rules Advisory Committee. The people have been putting a lot of time and effort into making sure this program moves forward successfully. I also want to just make a few comments to put this report in context. We should all keep in mind, this is a retrospective look, the cost trends in 2021 and 2022. This is useful and important for us to do. But I hope when we get to the panelists' discussion, we can talk about current and future cost trends, which is, of course, most relevant to Oregonians. We should also keep in mind that the years 2021 and 22 were clearly affected by the disruptions due to the COVID pandemic. It's important to do a detailed report and analysis of the factors driving these trends, but we should keep in mind that this was a unique period. And finally, I think we should keep in mind that the Cost Growth Target is only one element of the many efforts in Oregon to address the affordability crisis. And in fact, the Cost Growth Target Program itself is still in its early years. And the effectiveness of this program will only be known several years in the future. So this is a long-term effort, and we're, we're still learning and hopefully gaining, making progress along the way. Let's take a look at the key findings from this most recent report. And in this segment, we're going to be focusing on the commercial market. Of course, we know that prices or rates in Medicare and the Oregon Health Plan are set through public policy. But commercial market is where there's more variability. So let's take a look at what's going there, going on there. First of all, we see in this slide that this is national data, not Oregon data. The nationally commercial costs have been growing for a long time, since 2008, commercial costs per person grew 62%, and that's well above what's happened in both Medicare and Medicaid nationally. Next slide, please. And we see here, too, that showing a little bit more data, data on the time periods that commercial insurance has grown faster in almost all time periods than both Medicare and Medicaid. You can see that between 2020 and 2022, the right-hand side, the commercial spending grew an average of 5.1% a year. Next slide, please. Now looking at Oregon data, this shows that between 2021 and 2022, per-person spending in the commercial market grew 1.5%. This is well below the cost growth target of 3.4%. But you can see, obviously, the effect of COVID here, where there was an actual drop in spending during 2020 and a big increase in spending in 2021. So one lesson from this, I think, is, of course, we should take into account the enormous disruptions due to COVID pandemic. But also, in some cases, it's best to look at multiple-year trends rather than picking a single point. But the good news was that in 2022, in fact, commercial prices increased only 1.5% below the historical trend. Next slide, please. Now, looking a little bit more closely, what's going on in the driving commercial cost growth, just in this 2021? Now, looking a little bit more closely, what's going on in the driving commercial cost growth, just in this 2021 to 2022 period? It's clearly, there are two areas that accounted for most of the increase, and that is in behavioral health and also hospital outpatient care. So you can see hospital outpatient services increased by 5.1%. And that accounts for a significant portion of that increase. Behavioral health also increased quite dramatically from 2021 to 2022. Next slide, please. And looking at this a little bit over multiple years, you see similar picture that hospital outpatient costs, that large orange circle there, grew most rapidly over that four-year period. Other areas of significant increases on the right-hand side, you'll see professional behavioral health. And also in the middle there, retail pharmacy, pharmacy costs tend to go up and down, but over that four-year period, the drug costs did go up quite a bit. As you can see, the bottom axis here is the percent increase, the size of the orange dot, dots. That's the absolute dollar change. So hospital outpatient is a major contributor, both in terms of percentage increase, but also just contributing to the overall cost increases. Next slide, please. And looking at that, that big orange bubble, what's driving hospital outpatient growth? It's both average price and the number of outpatient services provided. So there were significant increases. So you can see it's a second line, their commercial prices have grown 12% over that four-year period, and utilization grew 7.7%. Next slide, please. By the way, I should just have them going through these slides very quickly, but the full report is available online. I think it may have been posted already on the meeting agenda, but also it's available on the OHA website. And if it's not already in the chat, I'm sure it will be shortly. So you've got a right chance to chew on these in more depth. And let's take a look at the health, the commercial payers in this market. As you can see, most of them during this period, 2021, 22, did actually come in below the cost growth target. There's one exception to that, Regions. We don't, I don't know the reasons for that. And we'll be diving into that more closely. We don't know whether this is a one-year blip or if there's some systemic issues going on. And the same applies actually to all the other payers as well. Again, we should remember this is just one year, and there was a lot of disruption due to COVID that may have affected prices from year to year. Next slide, please. Now, this looks at provider organizations. This is a complicated slide here, but try to get the headlines. In the, in the commercial market, only five commercial providers organizations met the target. There was a large group that was indeterminate. But the, it does appear to be an issue with most provider organizations. Provider organizations, by the way, you can see in the, the green bars by Medicaid, many of them did meet the target or were close to meeting the target in the Medicaid market. So there's a very different picture between commercial markets and Medicaid and Medicare Advantage. And next slide, please. Let's, we should remember, this is not just about the costs incurred by provider organizations and health plans, but ultimately, this, this, the purpose of this is to improve affordability for those who are paying for healthcare, patients, consumers, large and small employers, taxpayers. This shows the average Oregon single and family plan commercial health insurance premiums. As you can see, it's risen from over the last 10 years up to 2022, up to 20,000 annually for family coverage and a little over 7,000 for single coverage. I think when we have our panel discussion, we may want to talk about what some of the current trends are because we do know that there is, there are some more rapid increases in recent years. So that is a very quick review of the new report on the Cost Growth Target Program for 2021, 22. Again, thanks to the OHA team that put that together. Brenda, if we're ready, we can move along to the panel discussions unless there are some questions or comments from board members at this point.
Hearing none, Bill, I think we're ready to move forward with the panelists.
Great. Thanks very much. And I'd like to introduce now our panelists. We have two experts who live and breathe this stuff. And not only from the organization's perspectives, but also, I think, the bigger picture of what's going on in Oregon. And we're really looking forward to a good conversation with them about what's been happening and why. Analysts are Paul Harmon, who is Vice President of Actuarial Pricing at Regions, Sean Parkman, who's a member of the Employees Benefit Board. I think Paul and Sean, you're both there in person, is that right?
Yep, yep. Here we are.
With you all, my travel plans got in the way of this, but I hope this is okay from your all's perspective. Let's just start off, I'm going to do some light facilitation here, but I really, we really want to hear from you and have some time for a dialogue with board members. But just big picture, from your perspective, what's going on in the commercial market? What are you seeing as the main cost drivers, both in this measurement period, this report, 2021, 22, but also since then, up to today, and looking forward? I'll just note that while we come out overall, we met the cost growth target statewide in 2022. Questionable whether we'll be able to do that in more recent years. The, I understand that the individual small group and rate requests were just published, and they average 9.3% increase for individuals and 12.3% for small groups, still to be finalized in the next few months, but those are the requests. But just want to give a little context for that. So to ask what's going on back then, 2022, and recent years, and going forward. Sean, can we, maybe I'll ask Paul to start and then ask Sean to add his comments.
Sure. So thank you for having us here. And Paul Harmon, I've been, I'm an actuary working at Regions for most of my career and focused on the commercial market for almost 20 years and appreciate the chance to talk. It's interesting times, I'll say, and, you know, both looking at the 2022 report. Our experience is very similar to what Bill shared on, sort of from that market-wide perspective. In particular, outpatient was a big driver. The, sort of the behavioral health was a big driver and prescription drugs were. And it's, I think, one of the unique aspects of the Cost Growth Program that's going to create some more transparency because it kind of goes back to the, we've got to, we've got to have more control over cost. But some of the cost isn't necessarily bad. Behavioral health is the obvious one, where the growth there often represents just an undersupply that previously existed. And, you know, want to make sure that the, that the, sort of the rate that folks are paying for those visits, for those services is fair, but having more of those is definitely a good thing in the long run. The other one I'll look at is outpatient. A lot of the work that we do as a company is to try and find the, how do we have the most, the highest value care, but in that most efficient setting? And you can often see where a particular service in a particular setting can be twice as much, three times as much, even though there's not a difference in outcome. And so particularly with outpatient, it is often our goal, working with the member, working with their physician team, to, does this need to happen in an inpatient setting? Could it happen in an outpatient setting? It's the same exact things happening, but because of the way the cost structure is these days, that it can be half the price. And how do we incent that? So when we look at outpatient going up, it does require that next level of digging. And it's the, all right, if you've noticed on the slide, inpatient did go down during this time period. And to the extent that that is the sort of a one-to-one, when it makes sense, when we can maintain the value, that can be a win. And so with sort of the utilization increasing, not necessarily a bad thing. We want to sort of understand that more and, you know, through this program, kind of talk out those results. The piece, though, that's more of a struggle with outpatient is why are that per-service cost going up a lot? In this case, especially from '22 to '21. And again, you get into a lot of numbers very quickly, but it is the, what's the driver of this? That increase, it could still be cheaper and sometimes much cheaper than doing it in a different setting. But is it still appropriate? Is it still, you know, is this cost reasonable and how do you manage that? So I wanted to highlight those two, where it is that aspect of cost growth that is good for Oregonians, or at least is potentially good for Oregonians. The prescription piece is harder. We just see just constant, constant push on the cost of all drugs. And even when we're seeing a shift to cheaper, more generic drugs, we see just a matching for the brand drugs, for the specialty drugs, just huge increases in that cost per pill, cost per month, however it's given. So that's kind of the look at '22 over '21. You know, very much agreeing, lots of good stuff that I think for the various committees and for when we get to sort of discuss our own increases with the OHA and sort of walk through, hey, what were our drivers? The hope there is that it is educational and not just for us, but for the market of, all right, if our drivers were similar to the market, but our overall costs ended up higher, what is that difference? And it could be something good we did previously. It could be something we happened to miss out on. But either way, we should know. Like, it shouldn't be sort of as lack of transparency that has existed previously. And so that's where, you know, some of the real growth and good of this program can come from, is just bringing that light to the table, bringing these conversations out into the open. I would say since then, trying to find a way for Representative Noz to feel better, it's been tough. It has still been tough. Cost growth is primarily driven by just the actual cost of care and the cost of those prescriptions. And the push on each of those costs has honestly only accelerated since 2022. And I'll talk briefly about this now. I think we'll come back to it as we talk about strategies and things. But the, it is relatively unprecedented requests for just how the providers are looking to be reimbursed. And when I say providers, I'm not looking at doctors, nurses, you know, lab techs, any of the above. It's, we're dealing with that overarching provider organization. And that's where we have our, our discussions and the requests there have been unprecedented. They have been double-digit in size. And, you know, that's a part of where we do think we offer value to our members, but it is a challenging environment. And you're seeing that come through in those premium rate requests. Yeah, you're seeing that show up in just the expected increases in trend. There's always a segment that's, there's a part of it that's utilization, and there's a part of it that's just how much are we paying for each piece? And it's that latter part, what we sometimes call the unit cost, that just truly unprecedented for us and where we're just spending a tremendous amount of our energy trying to manage that balance between giving our members access to the care they deserve, but at a price that is affordable. And I know it's hard to say affordable when it is so challenging now already and probably will continue to be so. But that's sort of the balance that we're pushing with. One last thought, and then I'll hand it off to Sean. When we think about the commercial market, most of that market are Oregonians who receive care, who receive insurance through their employer. There's the individual market as well. Individual market's pretty different. The key thing here that we like to think about is that for individual, it's easier to sort of make a choice about sort of the breadth of a network, which physicians, which facilities, you know, meets your needs. And you see a lot more of that in the individual market, where you have sort of facility-specific options available to people. But for most of the commercial market, getting that coverage through an employer, even for small groups these days, employees can be scattered across the state. Even if the small employers in the Portland area or in the Salem area or on the eastern side of the state, you know, remote working is a thing. And so it, you do have this balance of, I want to be able to have a network which provides access for all my employees, no matter where they may reside in the state. And I would love for that to be as cheap as possible, but like, I want to have both. And I think that's a lot of the struggle that on the, the commercial side of insurance. It's how do you maintain that breadth of options such that when people need to be somewhere, they can get there? But without just accepting and sort of living with the sort of cost increases that are asked of us.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you for those very thoughtful comments. I know you have a lot of experience, been looking at this, not just for Regions, but for the whole state. Those are really telling points. We'll come back to some of those. Sean, is it from the perspective of a purchaser in your role on the PEB board? How do you see the situation, what, in terms of the cost trends, both looking historically, it was the last few years? What's driving it? And what kind of challenges are you wrestling with at PEB?
Yeah. Yeah, I really appreciate those comments. A lot of, there's a lot of similar things. I'll come at it a slightly different angle. So, so to answer your question very directly, I think that the, the '21, not to, at risk of not giving Rob Noz what he's, what he's looking for. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of optimism on the system at this point. I think
You're killing me here.
I'm sorry, Rob. The 20, I think that the '21, '22 is a phantom. I don't, I see nothing in our, in the network that, that anyone innovated anything that was particularly interesting that actually contained costs. I think that it was just, it was just an artifact that people weren't going to the doctor because they were afraid they were going to die. So, and then we were expecting like this huge bounce back in 2022, when everyone started to like stabilize and like, okay, we might be able to go to the doctor. And then, but it didn't happen then either. So it kind of, we kind of got like two years, just sort of like a break. And, but now it's very clear, like they're, you know, they're going to be making up. And the, the provider networks hadn't figured out how to make money off of COVID yet. So they, you know, so there was a lot of things that were just kind of happening. But there's no reason to think that we figured something out during COVID that's now going to like keep paying dividends and cost containment or something. So it's So it's kind of a phantom. I wouldn't get distracted by the lower cost twenty twenty one to twenty two. So the other thing that I would, uh, that I would just kind of say, so I I would agree like that there is all kinds of indicators that were very much heading in the wrong direction very quickly as far as cost containment and pressures in the system. And I don't see any like, uh, like easy tweaks that we can make that are just going to like solve that in the near future. So the other thing I would urge, uh, urge everyone to just really think about is, is when we talk about cost growth, just being really careful about what we mean by cost growth, because there's a lot of different ways to measure cost growth. So one of the ways that you can contain costs at the sort of like in the final analysis, there's kind of two ways to do it and there's two ways we do do. In in the public employees benefit board, but I don't think this is unique to us, that make it appear as if your costs are contained to three, four, and they are in a way to three point four percent. But it has nothing to do with innovation, improving healthcare or like curing people's cancer or anything like that. There's, there's two ways to do it. One is that when the costs go up, you just cut people's benefits. The end, like that's how you do it. You you just offer less. And that's how American healthcare system does it since the nineteen eighties. Like every time there's a cost growth, you just cut your benefits. And that's why Americans pay more than any other person, nation, every year when they run into this, you just cut the benefits. And that doesn't show up in the percent because the percent looks like you nailed it, right? Because, but that's how they did it. It's solved for X. It's the other way you can do it without cutting benefits is if you had a good year, like the code, like the, like the sort of random noise or the, you know, pandemic, uh, and you just had less utilization, your reserves, if you're self insured, your reserves go up. And you can dip into reserves, just kind of buy down your own interest. So when you're looking at the percent, like just keep your eye on like, did, did benefits get cut? That's what you really want to know. Like, did, did the cost go up in such a way that there's just less to offer? And I suspect if you really dig in, that's what you're going to find. Because that's pretty much how we do it in, uh, since the nineteen eighties in America. Okay, so with that being said, there's really, I I think it's really, let me, let me back. So I've been on the PEB board for roughly about ten years or so. And as I've learned this healthcare system, I realized that what, the way I thought that everything works was not even close. So in in my mind, there were, there were patients, there were doctors, and then there were insurers, and those were the players that you work with. And what I discovered is that there's a, there's a fourth component in there. And that fourth component is really where the main game is. And they in Oregon at least have the bulk of the power in that dynamic between the patient, the doctor and the insurer. And that is provider networks, right? So the provider networks are really the ones that say yes or no to whatever costs, right? And so let me just give you an example. On the PEB board, we were, uh, at one point, you know, for years, we've been chasing after these costs. We're like, oh, inch, you know, inpatient this and outpatient that pharmaceutical such and such. And so we were always like, okay, so this year, let's adjust this and make this less expensive and go over here. And then the next year, uh, we had solved that. We would come back the next year and the cost would be the same going up, you know, a certain rate. And we're like, well, I thought we solved that. And what I discovered is that whatever you change in the system, they're just going to adjust the price of the thing that you lowered on the other thing, right? So, and I started calling that the whack a mole game, right? So it's like whatever you, whatever mole you whack that year, they're just going to pop it up somewhere else in order to make up the cost somewhere else. So that's why all the shifting goes on between inpatient versus outpatient, side of cares. It's like wherever the most expensive thing is. And what's happening is that there's this provider network. We're really talking about hospital networks of, uh, they have, you know, like armies of people whose main job it is, is to maximize the charge they can charge for the procedure, right? That's their, that's their, that's what they do. And that adds no value to the system. Like it doesn't make, solve anyone or cure anyone's cancer. It just maximizes them out they can charge for the same service. So that's really what's happening. And so I said, okay, what if we just changed the game? I mean, I didn't say it alone. The board said, what if we just changed the game and we went and we, instead of paying people for one service at a time, fee for service, what if we just shifted the whole thing over to alternative payment models or value based payment models, right? We pay people for the value of making people healthier. And, um, you know, I was, oh, that's a great idea. Let's try it. And so we asked our plans to go out there and like make it so. And then they they came back and negotiated, well, the the providers said no. And I was like, what do you mean they said no? Or the insurer, right? And I, you know, because I was, in my mind, I was like insurers have all the power. It was like, how can they say no? It was that they just said no, they don't want to do that. And so, you know, you kind of dig into it. You're like, well, what if we just didn't work with that pay, that network? You know, what if we, you know, we just only, you know, contracted with the network that would do that? And they were like, there are no other networks. You wouldn't have a network in Salem, for example. We're ensuring, uh, state employees, bulk of which are in Salem. So just like, that's the game. And so there's, we're really not going to be talking about cost containment over time, as we're talking about industry consolidation related to the help, the provider networks. That's what's happened in Oregon. And so the other things that we've been talking about, they, they're also real, like not, not to say, uh, so for example, pharmacy is a pharmaceuticals, this, this is a crisis really at this point. The GLP one drugs around obesity, for example, is next year going to be a crisis because it's so expensive and so many people will be eligible for this drug that it, it'll just crash the system. So, um, but at some point, we're, we're not going to be able to continue to resist covering it because there's like this huge demand system, everyone wants this drug. It, for those not familiar, it helps you lose weight. You just take a pill and you lose weight. And so like, there's a huge demand in in the system. And it's like, you, you know, you're denying this medicine, you know? And so, but it's incredibly expensive and all, you know, sixty percent of people could be eligible. So it'll just, uh, so pharmas, the pharmaceutical industry is very much trying to compete to become kind of like the biggest problem in the system. And, uh, they're doing a pretty good job about it. So they, and the, the problem is with that is there's only so many tools you have to state level to deal with it. That's kind of a federal problem. And I, I don't want to like dissuade anyone from trying something on that. Uh, I'm just, I'm just saying like, that's a big, big problem, national. And maybe there's something we can do as far as like congressional discussion or whatever, price pan, price transparency, I heard. This is very much, uh, worth pursuing very much. Because that's a huge part of it. Sometimes when we're, you know, I'll, I'll ask the, our, our plans, can I see the contract you you negotiated with all these provider nets? Because like, what is the cost of a knee replacement? Or what is the, you know, and they're just, well, campus, you know, like, you know, it's just like, what do you mean? I can't even see what it costs, the thing that I'm paying for, right? Until it's already open. So that's a huge thing, totally worth it. I'm not deploying that at all. But I, I do really believe that, uh, industry consolidation at the provider network level is really a big piece of this, uh, challenge. And we're not really going to be dealing with some core problems until we deal with that. We do have, PEB has its own three, so we actually have a three point four percent cap. So it's not an aspiration, it is a law. And we meet that three point four percent cap. And in many years, we're able to do that by playing the whack a mole game, which is not nothing. I mean, there's work that goes into that, uh, site of care, some other innovations. We got a lot of big help, uh, from the legislature related to a, uh, a law which in shorthand we refer to as the hospital, uh, cap, which basically capped the, uh, the charges that a hospital can charge have and O F to two hundred percent of Medicare. And that, and and they hated that. We got a lot of pushback to that, but it worked. We saved, um, in one year alone, twenty twenty two, we saved a hundred and, you know, fifteen million dollars, something like that. Because it just kind of like contains the whole system. Now, that's not, it's great. So I'm just saying like, thank you, legislature, that worked. And that's something to look at, uh, in other states.
You don't hear that that often.
Thank you, thank you, Rob. That was, uh, it was good, it was good.
All right, excellent.
Yep, Rob. Sean, it's okay, this is great. Uh, I really appreciate you covered a lot of topics there and I noticed Rob has had his.
My main comment, other than thank you for the compliment, is what I struggle with around containing costs, and I'm going to say it in a kind of flippant way, but it's, but I don't mean it sounds so flippant, but like, everybody wants to be paid. And people who do this work, some are highly educated, highly, highly skilled, and others, I would argue, are doing a very important job that the culture has not valued enough for a lot of reasons. And their compensation should actually come up for lots of reasons.
Yes.
So that's the, that's the struggle I I have with like, how do we get our arms around this? Aside from the fact that, you know, okay, I'll try it this way. In dental, improvements in the standard of care come along more episodically, maybe periodically in the decade. As opposed to in the straight up medical space, we have, you know, innovations, to your point, these weight loss drugs that, you know, and other kinds of things that show up pretty much immediately. And I think we as policymakers and and healthcare leaders, we get very reluctant to say, hey, I'm sorry, but you can't have that. We can't afford it. Like, it feels like a moral judgment or, you know, only rich people get to have it. And we get really, but like, that's kind of what we're up against. You know, like rich people, if they really want a better education and better is a loaded term, they can afford to go to private school and then the rest of us are in the public system and we try to prop that up and make it as good as we can. And maybe we just have to sort of confront that and own that a little bit, like.
Yeah. Rob, if I, if I may, I mean, it is a fair point. Like, there, there are a lot of innovation, innovations in the mental system. As I say, pharmaceutical industry is coming out pretty brisk clip at this point of certain drugs that, um, some of which are quite life transforming, some of which are replacements for things that pretty much do the same thing, but don't improve anyone's survivability or anything like that. So for example, like, um, insulin, uh, we've known how to make insulin for a long time and somehow it gets more and more expensive. How does that happen? So things like this, there, there's, you, but you're right. What I would say is, and your comparison to dental is a great example. There, there actually have been quite a few of improved, because the PEB also purchased dental at the same time. And the, the way our negotiations usually goes is like, we have like ten minutes to talk about dental because it's so easy. You know, it's just like, we will do a rate pass this year, actually. We have no increases, you know, and you're like, thanks, moving on. And then we spend like, you know, four days on, you know, medical, right? Because everything's more expensive. How do they do it? So they are innovate, innovating. It's just the system hasn't, well, it's not this simple, but the system hasn't decided that, that this is a moneymaker. There's no, I do not disagree at all that people want to be paid and I want to pay doctors well. But that's not where the money's really going. Like the, 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 the actual providers, the actual providers on the ground, if you ask them, there's, there's a kind of an excess from the system. There's doctors and I'm, so clearly that's not where all the money's going. And it's not going to the insurers particularly, like I volunteer on the board. Right? So like, that's, that's, that's not where it's going. Where is it going? It's going to this, this layer that isn't really adding value to the system. It's, it's, it's the what is innovating, the real innovation in healthcare isn't about innovating new medical techniques. That happens at universities and some labs, but most of it's publicly funded anyway. The real innovation in the system is innovating how to get more money out of the regulations. That's the innovation. That's how you win. And so, um, that's where the, that's where the resources are, are, are really getting stuck. And there's kind of an easy way out of it. I mean, it's easy conceptually. And I'll, so I'll just mention this and then I'll just stop talking and see what question. But, um, one way to really do this is, uh, in Oregon, is to, uh, take the hospitals and treat them like a utility. Right? Just turn them into a utility system. And there's, they would have a rate kind of like this, there would be.
That's why we have this cost growth target because we didn't want to do that.
Yeah, well, for what it's worth, um, that, that's one way to do it. Maybe this will work. Like maybe you can, you can create a, some kind of enforcement mechanism in order to, to make the three point four percent stick. But you have to give the insurers some tools to actually make it happen at the provider level. The, not provider level, the provider network level. And so, uh, maybe there's a way to do that, but a, a utility model is kind of an easy, it's, it's conceptually sort of simple. It's like, we ran into the same problem in the beginning of the twentieth century where the energy industry was going to crash the system because there was all this competition and whatever. And we just decided, well, there'll be utilities and now those are super boring meetings, right? Which is great, that's what you want. So that's one way to do it. The, um, you could start with the, the rural access hospitals first, if you want.
Are we in question time, Bill?
Bill, I was wondering if I could jump in with a quick question and a follow up. That'd be all right. I don't know if we wanted to continue with some of the questions you had outlined, but I did have a quick follow up.
Sure, go ahead. I can't see who's speaking, but please go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, this is Tony German. Thank you so much for the two of you coming to join us here. Very informed of and really some conversation, which I think is necessary. Ms. Farman, you, you brought up a comment as far as this fourth component and, uh, fourth component in the room with the differential in power and the market forces with that. And it does bring alarm to me as far as our further conversations that's been happening at this forum with consolidation of care. And it worries me further as we've seen in this market, where we're seeing more hospitals, more systems, particularly rural areas. I practice at a rural hospital in Silverton. And I worry about that context and it really alarmed me just the, the discussion of what you've had is that if we move further down that pathway, we're only going to see prices rise. Is that your estimation? Is that what you've been seeing?
That's what I get, that's our experience. Yeah, the more consolidated a particular area is, generally, the higher prices.
And I, if I can hop in, I would agree whenever we've seen consolidation, even with the, the best of intent, it, it has seemed to always lead to higher prices. And it does come back to that concept of leverage. And I think one of the pieces that you don't have that consolidation on dental. That's part of the reason it, it's behaved differently. You, you don't have sort of the, the, either geographic or any other kind. You still have lots of independent, just some small dental groups and, and just to, you know, from the, that provider network side, there, there was the disruption from COVID. And that is something they've had to work with. And to that more general point, yes, we want to be able to pay the doctor. We want to be able to pay the doctors, the pharmacists and everyone, but it's the, but at what point? It's, it's not that 3.4 is something, 3.4 is, is real and it would provide some flexibility. It's when it moves beyond that. And part of what we had hoped, and it may still prove out, is the transparency of this does provide more leverage of these discussions, even if we're still bound to not sharing specific numbers. Like, we're going to have to talk in these forums. Our rate filings have to show our projected unit cost in them. And it's through those discussions that give us a little more strength with the, the provider networks on. And you've seen us in the news this year. And that is not a place we've historically been willing to go. But it also just represents, it has to stop.
The other thing I found alarming, just as your discussion as far as the opaqueness of the price sheet, as far as, you know, and understanding of what you're paying for. As far as I would think that that data, that information would come for, as far as those costs between, and we know this, it's been historical, but I'm surprised that you're in to share that information that, you know, to know what a knee replacement or hip replacement or elective procedures or those costs sheets just stands out to me.
So can I, I, I'm wondering, Paul, what is your, what's been your experience with trying to do alternative payment methodology when, and with the provider networks?
And I, I think it is absolutely one of the levers we have. And we have had success on the individual market with it. And I think one of the things is, again, if we want to talk about leverage in the individual market, it's, you are able to say, we can offer a network, which it meets all federal and state adequacy, but excludes, you know, an entire provider system. And yes, certain Oregonians aren't going to want that product, but they will then have the choice of something that is cheaper. Like, we are able in those situations. And again, you know, mostly talking though, just the metro areas, of course, where we can truly say no and still offer a product that provides value to the most people that would be able to choose it. When you move into that space where the, that broader access is needed, just because people are living everywhere, that's where sort of talked about it at the macro level, but also for alternative payments. We see willingness to do things. It's usually small scale and you still fall into the same trap of, I'm already in your big network. I don't have to do this. I can just say no. And if they're going through a time of disruption, at least as they're perceiving it and experiencing it, i- it's harder to have that inroad of. I guess one other thing, good news, bad news. Oregon does have a lot of health insurers. There is a lot of health insurance competition. But it does mean, again, when it's, when we're working with a provider, they can run to the finish line with us because they know they do have seven other options. And that the, the people who really enjoy using their system have, will have other choices that, yep, we happen to be relatively big. But there's really no huge insurer in Oregon. You've got a, a lot of us with about similar market shares. And it really comes down to, you know, business and negotiation. And you know, we think we do things and we do a lot of, I think, really good things around the edges. You know, holding down costs a percent or two. But if sort of the request to us just on that cost per service is double digit, it, it, it's a challenge. And it's a challenge we do work with. We, we do think of them as partners, the, the provider system here. But it is just the, where we spend most of our time.
So we sort of have a consolidated provider market and they are a competitive insurance market. And so that creates tension around contracting. Because providers have more power in the system.
I'm going to interrupt for a moment. People online are very engaged in this conversation and it would be helpful if you could address your name. Just announce your name before you start speaking so that people can follow your, your very valuable words. Thank you. And that was Parat Chita.
Are there other comments from board members who are there at the table? Or should I go back to some of my questions?
Yeah, Bill, this is Peter Starkey in the room. And I think what, what I'm hearing from you, Sean, is touching on a variety of different ways in which the root problem is profit and record profits in healthcare from for profit and even within the nonprofit sector, just massive profits. And I don't think that either of you can really answer this question, but where in this report do we compare these growths with profit? So I don't know if there's an answer to that or if it's something to do for next year. But I think that these numbers kind of exist in a vacuum if we're not also comparing it to record year after year profits, whether it's a for profit or whether it's a nonprofit. I think that they're existing in a vacuum, because we can talk about the whack a mole all day, every day. But the biggest whack a mole of all is, you were just saying is, where are we making the most money so that we can keep increasing profits year after year after year and breaking record after record after record? And I think that, even though it doesn't necessarily have a lot of levers and teeth in it, I think it's that transparency with price, it's the transparency with profits as well.
So we're looking back to you for your list of questions, perhaps, yeah.
Thanks. Both of you mentioned that improved transparency will be helpful. There are new federal price transparency regulations. And the cost growth target program has its public hearing process. Do you think that will be enough to, for the cost growth target program to be successful? And if not, what more is needed? What kind of incentives are needed to encourage provider organization to help plans to meet the targets going forward?
So this is Paul Harmon, I can start off. And transparency on its own is probably not enough. And we've seen with the federal transparency, it casts a light on just how complicated the system is because of just the, the amount of data has been released is overwhelming and nearly impossible to parse if you're not sort of deeply, deeply, deeply engaged in the system. It gives, it, it's a place of leverage, but that leverage can go both ways too. You know, one of the, when we talk about the cost growth program, it's looking at this annual rate of change. And which is important. And as Bill talked about earlier, we always want to keep a look at that long term view as well. But we also do want to look at just what's the absolute price? Because at the end of the day, you'd still rather have the $200 procedure, even if it went up 10%, than the $1,000 procedure that only went up 1%. And, and so it's, it's all of these things coming together. And having more information, I, I do think will help. It'll certainly help insurers sort of be able to push back use facts. And at least have the, the provider networks in a situation of needing to explain like, why? Why is this one hospital so different than these others? Why is this one region so different? And, you know, maybe alone, the insurers can't do it. But again, in these forums, year after year, I do think that pressure will matter. We do look to continue working with the legislator and policymakers and everyone just on the, what can we do that doesn't have that unintended consequence of, of harming the, the member at the end of this? That we don't just end up cutting benefits. We don't end up needing to do sort of, you know, I don't, it's not rationing of care, but sort of even head towards those choices of, we want to use utilization management to truly remove waste, the, the things that are duplicates, the, the pieces that. But even in those situations, that's sort of a one time thing. All right, we, we found this bit of sort of waste in the system and we got rid of it. We have maybe one good year as a result of it. But it, it still is that cost per service and how do we put pressure there?
Yeah, that's totally agree with that. The only thing I would add is, so totally agree that it's, it's good, but it will not be enough. It's, it's just sort of like a caricature that we, we currently don't know. I mean, it's so egregious, you kind, you know, there's just a need to do it anyway, even though it's not the silver bullet. It's, it's one of the things. And what I would say is, when, when one goes to do that, the, the general rule in healthcare is the devil's in the details. That's just the way the system works. And so the way that you would implement price transparency very, very much matters. So I will give an example. And I, I like to compare healthcare to like the other, other parts of the economy. It's theoretically a market system. And then, but it's sort of a dysfunctional market system. So it's like, compare it to a market system that's actually sort of working. So think about it in comparison to buying a car. Right, so you go to a, you, you go to the car lot and, and, you know, it's got the price sticker on the car, right? But in the back of your mind, you, you kind of know that's not the real price. That's the price technically on the lot. And then you go to buy it and then there's a whole bunch of things who are like, well, that, you know, that there's a supercharger and we aired up the tires and that's a $600 this and that. And, you know, and so on and on. And you're like, would you also like the super bonus, like, you know, car cleaning thing? And then, you know, there's a warranty, but it's not a real warranty. You don't have the real warranty. And, and so by the time you leave, if you're not like one of those consumers, like my dad is just like, oh, then you, you kind of end up with like 20% more than whatever the sticker was or whatever. And that's the job of that person is to upsell you on whatever. That's kind of like a bulk of the healthcare system. It's like, there, that, there's definitely that back room where you actually do the purchasing. And that's what I was saying earlier. So that, that's someone's job.
Sean, at least if I'm getting upsaled, I'm getting an up sale. I feel like in healthcare, I never get upsaled.
That's true, that's true. It, it, it happens on the insurance side, right? And, and so it all has to do with how things are coded. And so my point is, when you, when you're doing transparency here, try price transparency, you have to design it in such a way that you're basically doing a bundled cost. So you, you force the system to say, how much would a knee replacement cost? Soup to nuts, like all the way, when I leave the hospital and we get the final bill, how much would that be? And there's all kinds of ways that they can get around answering that question directly. Because it's like, well, there's so many different types of, and, you know, like, what if there was an infection? And what if there was this? And what if the person was 80 years old versus, versus, you know, 20 years old and getting a knee replacement? That's a different cause and so on and on and on. And so that, they can kind of spend like forever, sort of like nuancing you to death. And there's a, there's a different code for that. You know, a 20 year old is, you know, this code and a 40 year old meets this code and so on. So you gotta force the system to basically be like, whatever. Just, this is the definition of a knee, replace soup to nuts, including like, you know, the, the charge that they charge you to wheel you out of the hospital and in the, you know, like all of it. Bundle. What is that cost? And then you have to have an enforcement mechanism to be like, that's what you said the cost was. And then when you actually get the bill, insurance or whoever, and they'll try to spread it out across different, you know, they'll, they'll send the insurer, the insurer this, and they'll send the patient that. Someone has to be able to be like, well, ah, ah, that, that's not what you said it costs. You said it costs this, you know, like, well, you know, so there has to be a, there has to be a mechanism to bundle and enforce that bundle. Otherwise, they'll just, they'll just maneuver themselves around whatever they said the cost was, because it was this add on bonus and they did the car wash as well and so on. And so, so it's just how you do it. So I'm, I'm saying it's a good idea. And there are professionals whose job it is to undermine whatever the policy is that you're doing. So like, you just have to decide, that's why so much of these federal reimbursement rules are so meticulous, which ends up accidentally feeding into their advantage, because then you have these professionals that they're the only ones that understand it. Is they're trying to pin people down and be like, this is what this is and it costs this, right? And they're like, yeah. But now there's too many codes anyone can keep track of and now they can use it. So you just got to be really careful about how you do it as well, so.
And this is Paul, just a quick follow up on that, if I can, though.
Yep, go, Paul.
All right. And what Sean is describing is a lot of what we try and do with the alternative payment methods of saying, we're going to risk adjust it. So it will, we're going to set a target. It's going to be, you know, for some risk adjusted thing. And then we will adjust your sort of actual costs for what happened to happen to you in whatever time period we're looking at. And we're going to compare that versus what we thought was achievable and which, you know, the, both us and that provider network have to agree upon it. And when we have success, it's the, we're going to give you the upside. Like, if there are savings, if we do achieve even more than our target, we're going to, you know, share that in some way. And where the struggle happens is, is that true accountability of, but what if they miss? How does, how does that happen? And, you know, Sean's brought this up in a couple of different ways. But for the most part, these programs are intended to reduce cost. But that is equivalent to saying reducing revenue for these entities. And that's where you have, you have that sort of natural tension on what is reasonable. And we do make progress in places, but then I, I think we do have challenges and we do have that sort of version of whack a mole too. You'll agree to this, but only if we adjust something else over here. And net out, it's probably still favorable, but you're still kind of moving sideways instead of forward.
Let me ask one final question here. And then if there may be some questions from board members. This is for Paul. And I'd, I'd ask this of, of provider organization representative if they were there too. But I'll ask for health plans. When health plans are setting rates, we know the major factor, of course, is estimating future costs. You know, hospital utilization, prices, drugs, costs and so on. That's, that's the main job of actuaries like yourself. But how does the rate setting process, decision making process take into account the effect on patients, consumers, small employers and other purchasers? How is that factored into the ultimate rate setting decision?
And so, thank you. This is Paul again. When we think about setting premiums and particularly as an insurance company, our first focus is to, we have to be there when the member needs us. And so we, we need to make sure that we're going to be able to pay their claims that we've promised. And we're projecting the future to some extent, always. And so, but we do know some things, like we have contractual agreements and, and, you know, generally speaking, our contractual agreements are multi-year. And so there is some certainty, there's always a bit of uncertainty. There's, we take a look at the, the pipeline of what's coming, whether it's procedures or more often these days, prescription drugs. And we do factor that in. It then somewhat varies by market. Because when you look at the individual market in particular with subsidies and with some of the, the regulations there. But ultimately, we do end up in a discussion as a company. You know, sort of that, hey, we, we think the costs that we will actually experience are going up this much. We typically, you know, we have our own administrative cost. We have our own surplus that we seek to control. surplus that we seek to control, but that all serves the members. And we'll have that discussion. We don't want to be an outlier in the market. We don't want to overreact. That's probably the thing we focus on the most of. We don't want to swing. And we want to be able to see that it's real, that it's sort of this cost is going to persist. A lot of discussion, a lot of me running around, but at the end of the day, we still just need to reflect what's really happening in the market. And we then do see what you would expect. You see that shift from bronze to silver. Or sorry, from silver to bronze. You see some of that from, you know, gold to bronze, even thinking about those markets. You know, you see it with employers of all shapes and sizes, having to make really hard choices about. How can I provide this benefit to my employees, have them access, but have it be meaningful access? And it's, it's tough and it's, it's not a place where we have that solution, but that's sort of what drives our participation here. And sort of just those annual things of, and and much more often than annual internally of where is cost increasing? Is there a good reason why? What can we do about it and have those conversations?
Thanks, thanks, Paul. It's very helpful. I'm I'm conscious of the time here. And I would, would love to continue this conversation, but I feel like we've touched on a number of really important things or other things we haven't talked about much at all. I would love to maybe in the second panel or in future discussions at the board and other forums. We haven't talked about, we just started to talk about the the role of deductibles and the increased reliance on high deductible plans. We haven't talked about the equity implications of of high costs and high growth. We haven't talked about, you know, where we need investments and where there are opportunities to reduce costs through targeted efforts. But this has been tremendously helpful. I don't know if there are any other board members who want to make some final comments or questions before the break.
Actually, thank you, Bill, for that. Let's turn it to Representative Noz. Any closing comments before we take a 10 minute break?
I'm I'm sorry that I won't be able to stay with you for the rest of the meeting. I've got some other things I've got to attend to. But this has been a super interesting conversation. And as usual, in the American healthcare system, it is very difficult to figure out what the solution is going to be to all of this. I mean, I think we can all articulate them, but given what we know about the dynamics of the healthcare market in the United States and how it works and the different systems that we have. One, if you're elderly, one if you're poor, one if you're working, but only if you're at large employers. Another, if you're working but for smaller employers, it's just. It's very, you know, everything else that I legislate around in Salem is kind of a system. We have one education system with some off ramps if you really don't like it. We have one correction system. We have one forestry system for the most part. And this is just, I think that's the struggle with this, but we'll keep trying until America decides to do something else.
Thank you, Representative Noz. Again, this is Brenda Johnson. I want to thank our panelists.
Yes. Forward to all your questions. Okay.
Thank you so much. I want to thank our panelists. We'll take a 10 minute break. I appreciate so much the conversation.
See you around, buddy.
Thank you so much. We'll break for 10 minutes. Welcome back. Thank you so much for the morning conversation. That was really enlightening. Again, thank you to our staff and panelists. Help support this important context setting for the day. Next up on our agenda, our very own Tony German is going to facilitate the next series of panelists. So Tony, if you'll introduce yourself to both and speak loudly so people on the Zoom call can hear us as we introduce our speakers.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Brenda. Can everybody hear me online? Okay. Get thumbs up there. I think we're good. So again, yeah, my name is Tony German. And if we could just go ahead and do our introduction before you speak, that'd be helpful for I think members online. So Oregon Health Policy Member here and a family physician in Willamette Valley. I'll be joined by Kirsten Isaacson, our Vice Chair here to do some reflections towards the end of our conversation. I really want to extend a big thank you to our panelists and guests here and spending their time with us. We have a few in the room and a few online. So I'm just, I'll just jump in introductions will be brief. So we can save time for more of a conversation and discussion. So our first is Craig Anderson, who is Senior VP and Chief Actuary at Moda, who's here in the room with us. We have Larry Soderberg, Chief Financial and Administrative Officer at YAM Hill at CCO, will be joining us virtually. Max Janasek, CEO of All Care Health Virtual. Thanks for being here. Brad Membell, CFO of Peace Health, who's joining here in person. And Dr. Tim Powell, CEO of Evergreen Family Medicine. A couple of brief slides. I don't know if we could pop those up. Just to get us grounded again in our conversation. I think the last panel discussion, I think, was very fruitful and I'm not going to go through too much of these slides, but I think just a couple. Looking in aggregate, you know, we are seeing discussion, healthcare costs are going up and growing. But looking at the individual markets, we did see in the year 21, 22, some successes in that. There's some trepidation about the interpretation of about that, but seeing Medicare being at 2.2% commercial being 1.5% and Medicaid being 1.2%. When we go to the next slide. Looking a little bit more at the still down looking at the different markets, this is also looking at growth and per person, per year spending 21, 22 by the respective markets. And seeing those individual areas as far as in hospital care, outpatient care, behavioral health, long term care, retail pharmacy and nonclaims. I'm not going to, Bill Kramer discussed a bit of these, so we're getting this, but I think it was good for us to take a quick peek at that once again. Good. Next slide. Most of our discussion in this panel will be talking about hopefully some of the strategies and successes that we can focus in on with respect to the payer side and that of on the provider side. Bill went into this a little bit as we see a mixed review as far as those that were able to meet and when we look individually at different organizations that were able to meet the mark and those that were found indeterminate and those that were unable. We go to the next slide, looking at some of the comments and things that surfaced up from a review with payers by our excellent team at OHA in the cost growth target publication. Some of the elements that stood out as cost drivers were the post COVID-19 return to care. Growth in retail pharmacy, that of the catastrophic claims and increased spending on behavioral health. Next slide illustrates a bit again of a look at individual organizations on the provider side and reporting who met and who didn't. And you can see again, this is just a collection mixture of those that didn't and not. When we look at the next slide, some of the commentary and perspectives on those cost drivers for provider organizations was again, increased utilization, expanded services such as in cancer care. Increase in nonclaims payment from CCOs, behavioral health spending again was a common theme. Hospital rate increases and that of the triple epidemic when we saw the coalescence of COVID flu and RSV. I thought he'd get us started with just a general question and thinking about reflection of our last panel discussion. But looking at the panelists and their take on, you know, what did you feel your organization was able to accomplish and to help meet you, meet the cost growth target for this time period? And wondering if you could elaborate on some of the strategies or specific actions that we could take a look at to build up when we're looking at the cost growth target and get our discussion going. And I ask Mr. Anderson just to go ahead and get us started.
Thank you for that. Again, my name's Craig Anderson. I'm Senior Vice President at Moda Health. I'm an actuary. I've worked in Oregon for over 23 years. I also oversee our analytics areas and also our provider contracting areas, which helps with some of the collaboration I'll talk about later. So I, before I get into the specifics about what we did in 2022, maybe I'll just talk about the results of 21 to 22 more broadly. Because there was, I think, a comment about, is it random variation or was there something that was done? And I think going back to 2021, when we were looking at provider increases for 2022, I would say it was much more in the discussion of the 3.4% target when we were talking about increases with our provider partners back then. I would also say some of the pressures that our provider partners were facing with pent up, some of that, some of the economic factors that have been more noticeable in the most recent years were not as prevalent back then. I think there was more COVID money. So we just, just the the environment back then was a little bit different in the provider contracting. I just want to note that. So some of, some of the results, I think, reflect that. And then I think it was also commented earlier that COVID obviously had a big impact 20, 2020 to 2021. That was a big rebound, but I would say 2022. There were still some pent or some suppressed utilization because of COVID. There were variants that were going around still in 2022 that I think kept people from going to the providers. So I think that that's also reflected in the aggregate numbers. I'll speak for one payer. I don't want to speak for all payers, but for Moda, we were, we're in three markets. We're Medicaid, Medicare, commercial. Medicare, we're very small relatively and we did not meet the target. We were actually an outlier on the high side. So I think some of that is random variation just based on our book of business. But in 2022, we did see a pretty large utilization increase in Medicare. So unlike commercial markets, Medicare, we did see that persistency and a rebound in COVID. For Medicaid, and we represent Eastern Oregon CCO, it's a rural area. It's probably the largest geographical area in the state for a CCO, but it's not the largest in membership. It's about 71,000 members. We came in just slightly under a target, but it was indeterminate because of the statistical credibility. And then our commercial markets, about a quarter of a million members and we met the target in that market. And we, what we did specifically to get your question finally here. So we're consistently looking for ways to to curb cost growth, growth. And I'll probably talk about that more during this discussion. But in 2022 specifically, we, we introduced a few initiatives around chronic diseases, chronic kidney, chronic kidney disease and diabetes specifically that we showed the muscle impacts that helped to curb costs. We also rolled out a couple of programs to address high cost pharmaceuticals. That was, we saw that that was helpful and that related to some of the comments that we heard earlier about side care. Even for medications, depending on where those medications are administered, you can have a lower cost of care. So that was a big focus in 2022, continues going forward. And then lastly, we introduced a new claims, this is sort of in the weeds, but it's a new clinical editing system. So as a payer, we're tens of thousands of claims are coming to us every day. And we try to auto, what we call auto adjudicate or make that as efficient as possible. So those pay quickly. So consumers get those paid quickly as well. But part of our claims processing system has a number of edits in it to make sure that the claims are appropriate, they're coded appropriately. So that was implemented in 2022 or a revision to that or a new new software that helped save some costs as well for consumers and our members. So those are some of the things that we saw in 22.
Thank you very much.
So I'm relatively new. I've been at Peace Health for about a year or so. But when we're looking at our numbers, there were a lot of suppressed volumes. And where we saw that especially were discharges, admissions. Sorry, Brad Numble, I'm the CFO for the Oregon Network for Peace Health. For FY22, we saw discharges were down, but where we saw the lowest decrease in volumes was really in surgeries. So I think people were still scared to come into the hospital. There's some still trepidation. You have the perfect storm of everything hitting all at once. And I think people were like, I can, if this is an elective or not truly urgent surgery, I'm going to hold off. But one of the things that we did see that probably curbed some of that decrease in volume was a lot of our nurses left to travel. And so when when nurses leave to go travel, that means we brought them in. And so when we were looking at just our salaries overall, you would figure that although that we were, had a smaller footprint and we were trying to, you know, basically, you know, right size the organization for the number of volumes we had, that was all offset by traveler expense and early on traveler expense. So, you know, we, we can talk now, there's a lot more things that we've done in 24 to kind of right the ship. But you, if you needed folks, you had to grab, you had to get travelers. And I think one of the things that especially is tough for Peace Health in Lain County is trying to recruit for bringing travelers in. So we've actually come up with some really innovative things lately. But yeah, 22, we just saw our travelers numbers go through the roof. So we didn't see, although we made the target. We, I don't think we saw the same decrease in cost that we were, we were expecting.
Thank you for that. Yeah. You know, I might just for the group and just for efficiency, if you, if you have elements, you think we want to lead into where we're at now. So I I think it is remaining the conversation is to talk about those that you're thinking about now.
Like I mentioned, we have difficulty recruiting into Lain County just because of the geography. So our RNs are tough to recruit for. There's specifically what people have told me is a lack of partner jobs. So there's trying to move people into Lain County is tough. RNs, professionals, techs, housing is extremely expensive in Lain County. Becker's put out an article, I think, mid-May that showed that Oregon has the third highest RN average rate in in the country. Now, if you adjust that for cost of living, it goes down to 19. And so what we really have is we bring especially physicians, nurses, all, you know, what we call caregivers alike. Is people want to join Peace Health. They want to either work in Cottage Grove or Florence or out in Springfield, Springfield, Eugene. But when they actually come out to look for housing, they can't find a portable house. And so what we've done is we've actually partnered with Lain Community College, knowing that we're having a tougher time getting people from outside of the area. So we've given them additional funding to start another cohort of RNs, adding 20 more people a year to their, to their academic session. And the other kind of tech that we have especially hard time with is respiratory therapists, RTs. And so they are actually starting an RT program with additional funding for Peace Health, knowing that people are already going to Lain County Community College and we can try and keep them in our, in our geographic feature. So that's been one of the things that's been super helpful. The other thing that we've learned is, you know, educating our own caregivers. So we started fellowships and residencies. So we'll take a med search RN and put them in a fellowship for either OR, the operating room, the emergency department or the ICU. Again, reinvesting in our people, knowing that they're here, they want to be, you know, here. And then working them through to a higher level of care or more specific. Operating room nurses across the country are very hard to find. Surgical techs are increasingly hard to find. Sterile processing techs are extremely hard to find. And so what we're also starting now is looking at our EVS staff and working them through to become sterile processing division techs. Again, trying to just really look at how do we grow our own and trying to become more creative with the the people that are organically in Lain County and how do we invest in them, show them that we care and then keep them as part of Peace Health. And that's been super helpful. When I first got to Peace Health, I want to, in April of 23, we had 250 travelers, if not more. And now we're down to about 110. So it's really done a good job. And we've opened up ICU beds that were previously closed during the summer. Again, just due to staff.
Thank you so much for sharing that experience. I mean, training locally is allowing people to stay, you know, where they have their preference. I might switch over to those online to Larry Soderberg, perhaps, give your thoughts.
Yeah, good morning. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm Larry Soderberg. I'm the Chief Financial Administrative Officer for YAM Hill Community Care, serving YAM Hill, parts of Washington and parts of Polk County, primarily in the Medicaid market. That is our focus. We are a nonprofit org, so it's a little different structure for us in regards to what some others may be facing. We're really a community benefit, community owned, community centric organization. So a lot of what we do and how we focus is really driven by and engaged with the community, which helps us greatly. 21 to 22 experience, you know, I'd love to say that we, we do think that some of our efforts and strategies did contribute to us meeting the cost growth, albeit I think it would be worth recognizing that some of the continued impacts of COVID really did. that some of the continued impacts of COVID really did reflect in the numbers that we saw. We were obviously in the Medicaid phase, space facing redetermination impacts, so membership actually growing. So how's that look out like in regards to impacting utilization on a per member basis? Some of those numbers may be suppressed, obviously, with regards to that increase in membership. So our, our impacts of post-COVID, as you get through redeterminations, utilization impacts are really starting to reflect in more current experience. So I think that you'll start to see a bit of a flipper of bounce back in regards to Medicaid side of things. Beyond that though, as far as the strategies that we've been going forward and looking at is really staying true to our, our value-based pay roadmap, looking for opportunities to partner with their providers where you can look at something that would be more of a sustainable and stable level of growth. So whether it be a capitation agreement, so that's when you're starting to see those more of those non-claims type of payments being expanded, paying for quality incentives where you can, trying to align those efforts around quality, investing in primary prevention, especially around primary care. One of the other aspects that we've got in particular is a current community and prevention wellness fund, which is an opportunity for us to really bring community partners together, braid funds, and invest in upstream primary prevention activities. That's not something you're going to necessarily see in the healthcare cost growth. For us though, in the long game, we do see those as opportunities that will come back and pay forward in regards to reducing healthcare cost growth for our population in particular. I think the other advantage for Medicaid that we, we also have is, is living within the global budget that we have. It may not be a true global budget in the sense of, but obviously CCOs do have, have a capped growth overall in regards to state budget for funding. And when we're given our rates, we really do have to, though, and that's obviously the hard negotiations and efforts we'll have to do with our providers to kind of really kind of balance out what we have to afford, what can we afford? And how do we sustain the organization as well? So you're really kind of balancing those various forces. I do think going to the future though, you know, as has been mentioned already, I think workforce is going to be a continual challenge that we're also facing. And how do we support the provider network in particular around sustaining workforce, bringing in new docs, new nurses into the areas, especially since we're on that kind of rural urban boundary? We want to make sure that we've got local access and capacity for our members. And so that is really a shift that we're looking at right now. You hear a bit about behavioral health in particular, some of the policies that are going on statewide, but it's bigger than that. I think we obviously have to look beyond just behavioral health. How do we sustain, you know, the, the primary care docs that we need? A hospitalist, specialists across the board. We've got to make sure that we've got the workforce to have an adequate network.
Back to Jen, a sec. Maybe Brad, your thoughts?
Yeah. So just a little background, I'm the CEO of All Care Health located in Southern Oregon. I've been here for about four months. So I will draw on what my team has shared with me for All Care. But prior to that, I spent five years at a federally qualified health center located in the river called One Community Health. And so I'll probably also reflect on that experience since that was over this time period. And prior to that, I was 11 years at Regions, Blue Cross, with Shield and Cambia as the VP of Innovation there. You know, from an all care standpoint, I think the biggest cost levers that were used over that time period tied into things like care coordination. So really connecting with members on an individual basis when they receive a new diagnosis, or they're hospitalized, or they, you know, have a social need that's identified to really support them through the navigation and the options. Another big area of focus is really on the social determinants of health, you know? So if someone doesn't have access to housing, how are they going to manage their chronic condition? So, you know, from like a Maslow's hierarchy, you kind of have your basic things you've got to get in order if you're, you're going to take care of your whole self. So a lot of investment, almost all the community investments that All Care has made have, have really gone in, the majority of them into those areas. And then really ensuring an adequate network for primary care, behavioral health, dental care, knowing that those are the areas that if we can get people in to the primary care or into behavioral health, that we have a higher chance of reducing kind of downstream costs. So that's kind of from an all care standpoint. But one community health standpoint, we were new to the cost growth target. That was something that we grew into. And so we were relatively naive in that area. When I started, it was essentially, oh, now we're, we're being held to a cost. But one really interesting observation that I had initially was we didn't get data on the actual cost until a year after we, they're incurred. So if, you know, we're wanting provider groups to manage cost, you kind of have to give them the cost data so they know where the cost is. Because most of that cost is not occurring in the FQHC or in the primary care. It's occurring in all of the other elements of treatment. So getting that data forward. But some of the things we did, just based on our knowledge of costs and what we thought our members really, our patients really wanted, was, you know, really connecting with our providers and learning, what are the tools they need in their toolkit? And our providers didn't want to just prescribe a medication, you know, because you have a limited number of tools you can do in a, you know, 20-minute office visit. So they were really excited to do things like Zumba classes, yoga, strength, recovery classes for people going through addiction recovery. And some of them taught those classes themselves. One of our providers taught the yoga class. So it was really cool for her to be able to see her patients in a different light. We were also investing in a digital platform called De Lasmeas, which was a bicultural bilingual product that would take that and allow members or patients to experience that, those same classes and preventative health tools at home. Now, the COVID cliff and all that funding disappeared, so we weren't able to invest in that in the way we wanted to. But I'm hopeful that that will continue to be an area of focus for the FQHC. Another thing we did was we really tried to help our providers operate and learn new skills at the top of their license. So we ran a residency program and we use this technology called the point of care ultrasound. So I was also a patient of the FQHC and I got to experience that as a patient. And, you know, I avoided an ER.
Bye tomorrow.
I avoided.
Send him a quick note. Yeah. Yeah, he has been pretty good.
Somebody's off. Somebody's. I think we have somebody else. So we can ensure participants on, on the line if you could mute so that we.
Yeah. So just to finish that thread there. So really allowing our providers to do more in the visit. And as a patient, you know, if I wasn't a Medicaid patient, my $30 copay or my, you know, my cost was relatively contained in that primary care visit. If I had gone to a hospital and had, you know, had to have an ultrasound done, I would be significantly incurring more costs. You know, a couple of other things we did were of a workforce standpoint, we started an apprenticeship program for medical assistance and dental assistance. So we tried to minimize the amount of cost in recruiting and bringing out new staff. We directed most of our COVID bonus money to pay bonuses to our MAs. So we would retain them because they were such a critical part of the process. And then I would just say, you know, observationally, our providers were really good at understanding what drugs, you know, cost as, at a high level. And they knew kind of the formulary to this, to the extent that otherwise they would do calls from the pharmacy saying, hey, patient can't afford this drug. Is there an alternative? So a lot of them kind of had it in their mind of like, what would be things that our patients could afford? And they did that through like, they would meet weekly and have learning sessions together. So investing in that time in education and allowing your, you know, the providers to take time away from seeing patients to learn together is important. So a long list there, but just figured it would be helpful to see it from both the provider and payer side.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you. Dr. Powell.
Well, thanks. My name's Tim Powell. I'm a family physician. I've practiced in Douglas County since 1980. Currently, I'm the CEO of Evergreen Family Medicine. This is a private medical clinic serving Douglas County. I want to say I've really appreciated my time on the advisory committee. I've certainly learned more than I have contributed. It quickly became apparent to me that as I was listening to panel one, again, that people were looking at this same problem through different windows. And each of them were seeing a piece of the, the problem. I think it is valuable to have everybody in a virtual room talking. So I've learned just recently of, of the goal, if you will, Oregon's cost growth target that our spending should not grow more than 3.4% each year. And, and then I learned that my group, Evergreen Family Medicine, had received an invitation to participate in that. And my first thought was somebody has an inflated understanding of my ability to harness such a multifaceted economic force. There was so many factors influencing expenses that, that I can't change. In primary care, we spend a lot of time in the trenches where they're head down just working with all the whirlwinds and headwinds roaring overhead. And so it wasn't be an issue of being cynical about this, but more of a humble understanding of what I can control. And what I can control is not nothing. There, there are areas of control. And I further absolutely support the intention to make, and especially my heart is in primary care, to make it portable and to make it accessible. But somehow to bring all that entails down to a number of 3.4% just seemed horribly simplistic. Let me give you an example of what I'm speaking to here. And I'll move on quickly to, to what we might have done to, we, we met the Medicaid thresholds. But I'm very grateful for a program, OHP Bridge Insurance Program. It's coming out. It's, it's necessary to help what some people have called the working poor is the right thing to do. But this may increase expense. The problem with the exchange that I have seen is first of all, if the patient is paying for the insurance, it's, it's expensive without a lot of subsidies. It's expensive. And the coverage is primarily based on preventative care. So when the patient actually gets sick, that, that coverage is, is lacking. Bridge insurance is basically OHP coverage. Now, what I've found is that folks with insurances that have high deductibles oftentimes will avoid care even when they're sick. And so if that barrier, that cost barrier is removed, utilization's going to go up and it should, it, it should, but expenses will, will rise. Let me say also that although this committee and, and the legislature is, is very concerned with total cost numbers, that's not the concern of the general public. What they care about is what it costs them and whether the care is accessible. So here I am on a panel speaking to how we did it. Evergreen's primary care, we, our primary clinics are in Roseburg, but we go both north and south in the county. We have about 50 providers total. And I'm serving on a panel speaking to how we, we met that threshold. And, and let me attest to you and everybody listening, I don't know, certainly nothing different than we've been doing all along. But here's, here's my initial thoughts and trying to do, to be helpful. First of all, it's, it's helpful to start from a good place. Now, you can look at that and, and again, I don't mean to be cynical in this, but sentiment metric is an annual increase rather than the total expense. It would help if I had started from a place of high expense. Because the, the increase is, is, is the measure. But I, but I hope, I hope the good place that our group started from was we had, as we went into this, we worked so hard at efficient processes and we have a very mature patient standard home. And I, and I think that is extremely valuable. Secondly, since this is a ratio, that is the total cost per patient, it helps to have a big denominator. And at Evergreen, we treat a lot of OHP patients. That's, that's where we live. We have a relatively poor county and, and we're very available to those people. And, and that helps moderate the variation that otherwise would happen. Thirdly, it helps if we're able to exclude a lot of the factors that actually create most of the expense. And that's macroeconomic factors, what people call acts of God, total comp for frontline workers and, and high cost pharmaceuticals or, or procedures. But if, if, if Evergreen is, is found acceptable according to these measures, and because we're doing something right, this is, this would be the things that come to mind. First of all, we work very hard at being accessible to patients. We do everything we can to keep them out of the ER and hopefully the hospital. Secondly, we have a very, very aggressive transition to care program for both the ED and the hospital. About 90% of our patients across the board from all insurances are seen within seven days after they visit either one of those. The third thing we have is we've started a program over the last several years of called Intensive Medical Management Services. And we have meetings there where we pick out, actually, we don't pick them out, the patients pick themselves of high utilizers. They go to the ER a lot, recurrent admission, or just their treatment team identifies them. And we have providers or charge nurses, social services, community health workers, our mental health people, our administration from our group. But I also invite and I'm able to bring in virtually the medical directors from our local CCO, also nurses and social workers from our CCO, also from our Medicare Advantage companies. And with every single patient, as we go through that case, we ask the question, what's driving the behavior? And that, that always directs the intervention. It's almost always social determinants of health. And so sometimes we need to bend the rules to save money. The other thing we've done is we started a palliative care program and, and that's going very well. It's very time intensive, but it's oftentimes a very appropriate consideration for high utilizers. And again, once they've been really made to understand what that involves, it's not a denial of care, writing them off, but it's really pushing for a quality care and to avoid a lot of activities is totally unproductive. And meeting that type of goal and meeting their values, it's, it's appealing to them. Recently, we brought some diagnostics, zeo monitoring, echocardiography, mammography. We've brought that into our clinic. Now, that's going to save money, not, well, it's going to save money because we get paid less than previously. It was a hospital doing it. Hospital gets paid more because they're a hospital. But that wasn't the reason we did it. We did it because our patients simply didn't have access to these. They were waiting six months to get a mammogram and sometimes that long to get an echo and, and that's, that's just too long. And the other thing we're doing is working very, very hard to build up our, our, our mental health program or behavioral health psychiatry, substance use, SUDs. And, and we're, we've been fairly successful in, in doing that because this is where a lot of the non-productive expense originates as well. But this is going to create expense. And I hope OHP recognizes that these are inherently complex, difficult patients. And, and I, I, I think over time that's going to save money. I, I know it's the right thing to do. It's a necessary thing to do. One thing in primary care, we're, in essence, we're kind of close to the problem. And so we can, we can understand what the community is requiring out for. We have a very aggressive telehealth program. And our telehealth program, actually, we have an ability to listen, heart and lungs, look at the ears, nose and throat virtually, and do a DKG virtually and so forth. And we have that in the schools and in every assisted living, every nursing home, every member care facility in Douglas County. Because first of all, in these elderly patients or, or those with dementia or whatever, treating them in their own environment is much more productive. You have the nurses there to help. It's a lot less traumatic. And the goal is to keep them out of the ER because oftentimes otherwise that's where they go. And then a lot of schoolchildren in rural areas can't afford transportation to Douglas County. So those are some of the things that we're working on. Appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this panel. I've enjoyed hearing people talk.
Certainly a good list of remarkable things that are occurring in our state. Really appreciate that. We have far too little time, but too much to cover and to solve healthcare this morning. I want to actually skip just to open it up, but Chris and I also want to leave room for reflections and things of that. I look at time. I'm curious between, you know, I think the, the collaboration between payers and prior organizations on this panel and, and thinking about, thinking of reflecting is that, you know, we work in silos, but I'm curious of where panelists here have worked together. panelists here have worked together in addressing costs. And if we can speak to some of those areas where you've talked about some of the interventions you've done, you know, I hear, Dr. Powell, you've done a really remarkable job at your organization. Did some of those discussions about bringing in that infrastructure or doing those programs? Or I'd be curious at, you know, One Community Health, you know, how those conversations took place with providers? And, you know, with the idea that it was really bringing access to patients was first and foremost. But a discussion about how costs could be reduced with those interventions?
Tim, you want to start?
Sure. Yeah, I didn't want to overtake all the time. We had to reach out for that. That's something that was very important to us. And so, in each case, we reached out to the schools. I met with so many school boards. And we, and administrators there, we reached out to every nursing home, every facility to begin those, when we begin putting our IMMS things together, worked out, reached out to all the insurance companies, told them what we were doing and invited them to to have their key people there. So, we can work together on their patients. And with that invitation, we invariably had great responses. The need, again, is so obvious to the people, you know, the people at the nursing home, they understand when they send a patient over to our place, there's no communication between us and the nurse that really knows them. And our conversation back and forth goes through ward clerks and everything. And when we can talk directly, it's such a better solution. We're still struggling with sometimes some of the rigidity. I had a patient last week. I really just needed to admit directly to skilled nursing facility as opposed to the three-day thing in the state. These are how expenses happen. And I was finally able to do it, but it took too long. So, I've got to work on that. It just takes, I guess, a real commitment to doing that. But I have found the CCOs, I have found the insurance companies, once they understand what we're trying to do, eager to help. And honestly, it's enjoyable trying to work together because when you get everybody in the room and sometimes you say, okay, who has something that can help solve this? And sometimes we realize there is no solution, you know. But so often, there's poppin', I can do this, I can do this, I can do this. And you start moving it just a little bit forward. And sometimes the issue is to solve a particular problem, sometimes is to recognize a problem. Sometimes it's to recognize a problem that we need a system solution for, whether it's getting conservatorship for people that are just stuck in an area where they're not able to make decisions or maybe they're in the hospital and for disposition that we just need to be more efficient. And in that, I need to then work my local legal community, you know, to do that. But that's the kind of mindset I think it takes.
I would just add that for us, you know, I think it was less about being cost-driven and more really being about idea-driven and listening to what the team members who actually care for patients and listening to the patients themselves want. And then like direct observation, you know, sitting in on on visits, shadowing providers, shadowing MAs, experiencing it with them, and then supporting those ideas. So, you know, the focus wasn't like a top-down idea. It came from our providers, you know, the classes. You know, our recovery class came from one of our nurses and a peer that wanted to offer a group class. Same with the yoga class came from a provider. So, these things really were ideas that people had in the organization. And as a leader, you know, I want to help them bring those ideas to life. And part of that is creating space, right? You know, if you're just driving towards efficiency because, hey, you've got to get 17 visits a day in order to pencil, right? You take all the joy and all the creativity out of work. Well, then you're going to have high turnover and frustration. So, how do you create some space for learning, for ideas? I think a lot of organizations struggle with that. They feel so much pressure on these, you know, financial targets that they've kind of taken the joy out of delivering care.
And I would echo what Max just said. I'll speak very quickly of the best ideas I've had have come out of providers. We have now grief classes because that was understood. One of our persons, actually, a death doula, as we deal with end-to-life issues, but grief classes, dementia support group. In our chronic pain support group, we have over 100 people. People are on narcotics as kind of a group interaction and stuff where we talk about aspects. You know, it's very hard. One of the newer things we've done is trained our nurses to be proficient at cutting toenails. Because a lot of the elderly have horrible nails and they don't fit a diagnosis or don't have access where they can see podiatry, but they can't get down there. And it's a health issue. And so, being able to do those things makes a connection with patients. There's, and it wasn't, you know, necessarily save the money to do that, but hopefully it will. But a lot of the best ideas come from people closest to the problem.
Yeah, Larry, I'll add on to that as well. I think one of the roles that we've tried to play here is that bit of that collaborator and that convener of the community partners in bringing everybody together. As a recent example, having a discussion with something that was actually identified within our local Head Start as a need or a barrier to care to folks and bringing in that representative of Head Start, representatives of the schools, representatives of the actual provider community to find, okay, what's been tried, what's failed, what resources are available? And is there a way for us to possibly fill that gap? Or make sure that everybody is aware of what resources are available out there to make sure that we could, you know, break those barriers down for the members?
Thank you all. You know, I think this brings to mind, you know, thinking of these innovative strategies. And a question for this panel, as I've been thinking about this day, is that we've taken the approach of the state is to use a percentage growth as a target. And I'd just be curious about, you know, is that the right question? Is that the way that we should be looking as we're providing a framework for us as a state and for all comers to be thinking and allow that to be innovative? And we're thinking of it as a consideration of, you know, step up and do this. If not, there will be penalties. But I do think about these innovative approaches and thinking of that and how we reward that, you know, rather than being penalizing, rather than promotion of best practice and things like that. So, this is just a, an open question to the group of, you know, are there other specific areas that OHA or the cost growth targets or HPB, things that we should be thinking about that we haven't been asking?
Well, I guess, again, being the new guy to Oregon, I guess, when you have just a set 3.4% the cost growth target, I guess, is there a way to look at the confounding external factors, right? Because if inflation overall is 6%, you're setting everyone else up for failure. If we know that inflation and healthcare sector for caregivers is a certain amount, what does that look like? What is the medical technology expense inflation would look like? Because there's costs for, you know, surgical robots or things that provide better care for patients, right? There's evidence that shows if you use a robot, there's better control of pain, shorter length of stay. And although there's an expense that goes with having a surgical robot, you're having an opportunity for better patient outcomes. So, I just think it needs to be looked at more holistically. And then I noticed, you know, during the payer side, you know, outpatient costs were going up. Well, that's a good thing. Because if outpatient costs are going up, that means there's less care, hopefully, if the correlation is right, and inpatient. Outpatient care is always cheaper than inpatient. I think they made that point. And even as, you know, the CFO for the, for the, you know, the Oregon Network, we were looking at how are we using our operating rooms? If there's an opportunity to have an outpatient surgery in an ambulatory surgery center, that's going to decrease the cost. It also opens up an opportunity to have a surgery that's probably more acute and needs to be in an inpatient facility.